Started, our vortex and the law of attraction. So, some of what Abraham is saying right here on page seventeen and eighteen is actually material that we covered last time. And so I'm just going to bring your attention back to the diagram that I drew. Basically, what Abraham is saying here is that we think that we are just this physical form with a mind, but really there's another part of us, which Abraham, we call in Abraham lingo, the inner being, or Abraham says, the larger part of you. And generally, people refer to it as our soul. So there are two parts of us. One is the soul and the other one is the physical form. And both exist at the same time. So it's not like when you are born, that the greater part of you stops existing. It continues to exist at the same time. And so the thing that we had looked at last time was how are the emotional scale is the distance between where the inner being is and where we are. That distance is, is the emotional scale. And when we close that gap, we become one with our inner being. Then we have what Abraham calls alignment. So that's, we're basically going and revising that concept here on page seventeen. So Abraham says, um, that we want you to regain your sense of worthiness. It's the first sentence right at the top of page eighteen. We want you to regain your sense of worthiness and absolute well-being. It is our desire that you understand the important role. Uh, important role that you fulfill by being here in the leading edge, contrast-filled time-space-reality. So, um, worthiness. What is worthiness? Worthiness is knowing that when we ask, nobody is withholding it from us. That's worthiness. So, source does not withhold anything that we want from us. And when we know that and we believe that and we understand how it works, it enhances our confidence. You don't have this attitude of, um, oh, I don't know if it will happen, you know, like, I don't know. Good things sometimes happen and, and sometimes they don't, and I don't know why. You stop saying that kind of stuff because you know exactly how it happens. And you know that nobody is withholding it from you. That absolutely increases your confidence with everything. Alright. So, um, now, uh, on page eighteen, the last paragraph at the bottom of the, um, the, the, the page there talks about variety of intentions, beliefs and desires of others um, for the purpose of expansion. And that's important to understand that it's when, when we go around living life and thinking, we think, why do we think? We think because there's contrast, because there are things going on that, uh, that make us think because we have our own ideas about them. When we think, we lead to the expansion of the universe because from the last session, we remember, if we remember, that when we think, we are generating new energy. The thinking process creates new energy in the universe. And that is why we are at the leading edge of expansion. And what we do here on earth leads to the expansion of the universe. So that expansion happens because of our interaction with people around us. And Abraham says that we arrive at specific conclusions of improvement. And when we arrive at a conclusion for improvement, right in the middle of that paragraph there, you understood that by your exposure to the variety that surrounds you on all subjects, you would naturally come to specific conclusions of improvement. Conclusions of improvement, that is what, what you want. If someone is behaving this way, you want them to be different. If you are behaving this way, you want yourself to be different. So these are our, uh, desires for improvement, for things to be different from what they are. And those desires lead to our, are the reason for our thought process. Otherwise, we would just, you know, we would have no opinion about anything. We would have no desire about anything. Life would be very bland if we didn't have that, right? So, here's the important sentence in this paragraph is, "You knew that by living an unpleasant experience, a request for an improved experience would be born." "You knew that a request or asking or desire would emanate from you vibrationally and that your inner being would be aware of your new request and would follow it and focus upon it and become it." The important thing that I want you to understand here is, um, Abraham's words, how many people have heard Abraham say, "Get off the subject"? How many people have heard Abraham say that, right? Okay, so now you're gonna understand why Abraham says that in a really powerful way. There are two points of view, my point of view and my inner being's point of view. My whiteboard is dirty, I didn't clean it. Sorry. So I'll just have to use my fingers today, okay? Alright. So, my, my point of view, my physical point of view, my inner being's point of view. The distance from here to here is the emotional scale. When we close this gap, we are in a place of alignment, right? Now, the thing is, if my, if I go too far off on a subject from my inner being, but I stop thinking about that subject, my inner being is still thinking about it and giving it energy. So if I get off the subject, my inner being will manifest it for me. Okay? My inner being will manifest it for me if I stop thinking about it. Really important to understand. We feel, and every teacher who out there teaches you to visualize tells you to think about it. Stay on the subject if you're going to get it. But you have to understand that if you have negative beliefs, the only reason the thing that you want is not happening is because you must have negative beliefs about it. Otherwise, it would have happened. You wouldn't still want to visualize it about it, right? So if it's not happening, that means you have negative beliefs that are getting in the way. How, what is the easiest way to get rid of negative beliefs? The easiest way to get rid of negative beliefs is by you stop thinking about it and let your inner being do all the thinking. This is why Abraham keeps telling us, "Get off the subject. Just get off the subject." Just get off the subject. And then, and then it will all fall into place. Because it does not need your energy. Your inner being has enough energy to think for both of you. So, if you just get off the subjects of your life that you want to manifest, just let your inner being do the heavy lifting. Let your inner being complete the creation process for you. You do not need to do it. So, we, a lot of times, we give birth to a desire and then we forget about it. Completely forget about it. We get busy with life and then it happens. And we say, "Oh yeah, I remember, I wanted that and now wow, it just came, what a miracle." No, it came because you got off the subject and your inner being kept working on it. That's why. That's, that's how it works. That is law of attraction. That is all about understanding how energy works. That's, that is why Abraham says the easiest way to manifest something is get off the subject. Just get off the subject. Make sense? Yes? Awesome. I remember when I discovered this, it was like a huge thing for me. I was like, wow, Abraham, you sure are something. Okay, yes, go ahead Heather.
So you don't have to constantly manifest?
No, manifesting is happening automatically. That's why Abraham says, you just go and have fun. Go play with the bunnies. That's why they say, everything that Abraham says makes sense when you start connecting all the dots and you understand that this is a complete system that they are explaining to us and there is no deviation anywhere. It all hangs together. This is why they say, "It's not your job. You just go have fun." Let the universe manifest it for you. Cause if you stop thinking about it, your thinking is a problem. Your thinking about it is actually a problem. So if you stop thinking about it, now the universe can work its magic. I just did a video on my YouTube channel the other day called, "You're thinking, you have to stop thinking in order to manifest something along those lines." I don't remember the exact title. But you know, it's because this is the misconception. The misconception is you've got to think about it in order to make it happen. And Abraham says, "You don't have to make it happen, you allow it to happen." You don't have to make it happen, you allow it to happen and you allow it to happen a lot of times by just getting off the bloody subject. Get off the subject. Cause if you were positive about it, it would have already happened. The fact that it hasn't happened means you're not thinking positively about it. Which, which in, in turn means you don't know the difference between negative thinking and positive thinking. Or you are so much on autopilot that you don't even know what you're thinking. So, rather than sort it all out, get off the subject. Cause sorting it out, I learned, when I learned this, when I learned this from Abraham, I said to myself, "Oh my God, Zara, you don't know the difference between a negative thought and a positive thought." And because you don't know the difference, you should probably stop thinking. Cause you know, you're, you're, every time you think, and I actually had a visual, I had a visual. I said to myself, every time I think, it's like I'm taking a poison pill. I'm, I'm taking this pill that is full of poison and I'm taking it. And I'm taking thousands of those pills every day because an average person thinks fifty-six thousand thoughts a day. That means I'm taking, maybe I'm taking all fifty-six thousand negative pills. No wonder my life is a mess. So, if I don't even know the difference between a negative thought or a positive thought because I think I'm doing a really good job of thinking. I have a really good mind, I'm analytical. Well, guess what? That's the problem. That's the problem. I'm analytical, that's the problem. So then just stop thinking. If you stop thinking and you get off the subject, now you've given the control to the universe. And so while I gave control to the universe, I had to teach myself the difference between a negative thought and a positive thought, which is the foundation of all the programs that I teach. We don't even, most people don't even understand what the difference is between a negative and a positive thought. That's the problem. Tammy, go ahead. It's so good to see you after such a long time. How are you, my dear?
I'm really well, thanks. Um, I just wanna find out, you're saying now that, you know, stop thinking and whatever, if your conscious mind is negative on the subject. But will my subconscious or my higher being that now knows what I want and is on a high vibration, will that then bring the high vibrating thing to me?
Yes.
Even though my conscious is in a negative or low on the emotional scale?
No, no, that's not what we're saying. We're saying get off the subject. When you get off the subject, you are not thinking about it. So you're not creating any negative energy that gets in the way.
Okay, and my high, and my, my subconscious will be on high on the scale?
Your, your inner being will be high on, is always high on the emotional scale, never leaves its high place on the emotional scale and it can complete the manifesting job for you. Let your inner being manifest for you. You don't have to do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
And then things just-
I'm just gonna list lots of things this tonight and say, "Inner being here, you go for it."
Exactly, right? So this is, this is the whole point in the forty-day workout. When we, um, ask the, when we put things on the list of the universe to do for us, that's the whole point. Universe, here are these things really difficult for me to work on. I've decided I'm just not gonna work on them. Over to you. Cause I can't do it. Isn't that what all trust is? At least the way I learnt trust from a religious point of view, from the elders in my family, they always said, "Well, give it to God." That's what it means, but you see, here's, the problem is, we give it to God, but we still want to control it. And the way I look at it, the analogy in my head is, um, I, I'm teaching my son how to drive and he's in the driving seat, but I won't let go of the steering wheel. Well, then he can't drive, right? He's just gonna give up and he's just gonna say, "Okay, mom, either you do it or I do it. We can't both because you're getting in my way." And that's what we do, we get in the way. If we didn't get in the way, then the universe would complete the job for us easily. Much faster than we can. So this is why when we stop thinking about something, then it suddenly magically appears in our life and we're like, "Oh yeah, I remember now, I was thinking about that." Well, good for you, you stopped thinking about it, that's why it happened. If you could just stop thinking about all the other things that you're asking for, then the universe can bring them to you. Right? The more you want something, the, the more you want something and if you are not high on the emotional scale, if you're not right at the top of the emotional scale, then the depth of your desire is like shooting yourself in the foot. The more you want something and the higher you are on the emotional scale, then you don't need to bother about it because the depth of desire is momentum, is pulling power. So if you're high on the emotional scale with a lot of momentum, it's already manifested. So you don't have to think about it. The only reason you're thinking about it is because you are not high on the emotional scale. Cause it can't be both ways. You can't be high on the emotional scale and not have the things that you want show up. If you're high on the emotional scale, the proof of the fact that you're high on the emotional scale is that everything you want is showing up. So guess what? If I really want something and it's not happening, hmm, I wonder where am I on the emotional scale? I'm confused about this. I feel like I'm high, but it's not happening. So where am I really on the emotional scale? Right? It's not hard. It's not hard. It's easy and it is meant to be easy. Right? So that's what I did. I got off the subject of my life completely. And I said, "I'm gonna hand it over to the universe while I figure out how to be positive." Cause clearly, I don't know how to be positive. I made such a horrible mess of my life. I really have no idea what is the difference between a negative thought and a positive thought. And that's when, because I'm an analyst, I went and tore it apart and found out what is a positive thought. And then was the long, dreary upward climb to learning how to become positive and stay on the positive side. Cause it wasn't something I learnt as a kid. My parents were both gurus of being negative. I learned from them, right? Okay. Um, so let's move on. We are on page nineteen. I'm going to skip the italics. Usually I read the italics. I'm gonna skip the italics because the paragraph right under the italics, which is the third paragraph, is a lot more meaty. So people, many people refer to their physical life experience as reality. You decipher your physical reality through your physical senses, our five senses. And this is why when I teach meditation, what I say is, you've got to withdraw your five senses from the world. If your five senses are still engaged with the world, then you are not going into meditation. Okay? Because our five senses collect information and give it to our mind to organize. Our mind plays the role of organizing. And then our mind gets carried away because it thinks that it should be the decision-maker, whereas our decisions should come from our feeling place, not our thinking place. Okay? Uh, we want you to understand that even though you are seeing and hearing and tasting and smelling and touching the evidence of your physical reality, um, it is much more than the flesh, blood and bone reality that you believe it is. Everything that you perceive here in your physical environment is vibration. And the life you are living is your vibrational interpretation. And two people can therefore interpret the same thing differently. Vibrational interpretation. Everything that you feel, touch, see is your interpretation of vibration. Because we know this, and, and I don't, I don't know if, if you remember uh, having studied science at school, but if you do remember, you will remember how, uh, they show you that it's light that enters your eye that then the lens in your eye converts into a picture. Well, that light that's entering your eye is vibration. The same thing goes, uh, is about the eardrum and listening. The sound that goes into the ear is a vibration that is then captured in the eardrum and translated. That process of translation is based on our perception. This is why people see colors differently, hear music differently, smell differently. Because our senses, our interpretation mechanism is different from each other. Okay? Um, the powerful law of attraction is at the root of everything that you experience. And the stable, never-changing, always-accurate premise of this law is, "That which is like unto itself is drawn." Like vibration attracts like vibration. So now, hang on one second. Don't know what I did with it. Hmm. Now, I'm going to, um, hopefully add clarity. That's my intention. This is you and your emotional scale. Every person, everything, every animal also has an emotional scale. Okay? Food, food vibrates, food has an emotional scale. When you interact with something that has its own emotional scale, you cannot interact with it unless you're on the same vibration. So, if, if I, this is my emotional scale and let's say I'm over here at a place of worry. So the vibration I, that is coming from my being, my body, is the vibration of worry. And this is someone that I know and they're over here. They're high-flying. And I want to talk to them. I'm gonna call them and they won't pick up. Because they're not on my vibration. And they might actually forget to call me for many days because they weren't on my vibration. And then, you know, over a period of a number of days, I automatically start feeling better. So I kind of go higher up on the emotional scale to a place where now they'll suddenly say, "Oh yeah, I haven't called that person yet. I really should call them." And then they call. You cannot interact with anyone who is not on your vibration. And on that note, it was, uh, the day before yesterday was a very good school friend of mine's birthday. In the morning, so I have a reminder in my phone that tells me it's her birthday. When I woke up, I knew, I knew the day before that her birthday was coming up. I knew a week before that her birthday was coming up. And I was thinking about her. But on the day of her birthday, I could not call her. I thought about her all day, but I just could not. Every time I thought about her, then something else came up and I went and did something else. And then I was like, "Oh, I haven't called her." And then right before I was going to bed, I sent her a quick text message saying, "So sorry, been wanting to call you all day. I'll talk to you tomorrow." And then the next day, I kept thinking about it and thinking about it and thinking about, and still didn't call her until after dinner. And then I said, "Oh no, if I didn't call her again, I really must call her." So I called her. Guess what I found out? On the day of her birthday, she was really miserable. But guess what? I wasn't really miserable. Right? She was really miserable. Why? Because her whole family had COVID and they couldn't come and see her. So she was all alone on her birthday. Because of that, she was miserable. It would have been helpful if I had called her on her birthday. But I couldn't connect with her energy because she was so low on the emotional scale that I just couldn't reach her. Even though I wanted to, I couldn't call her. It will not happen. And then when she told me that, I was like, "Oh, now I know why I couldn't call you." Right? Because you were just in a place where I just wasn't going, I wasn't there. I couldn't match up with you. So, if you, this is, the universe is perfect law of attraction, never misses a beat. It is never turned off. It is always working, even when we have blackouts. Law of attraction is always working. It is always working. And everything that happens is because the law of attraction exactly matches up vibration with vibration. And if people are not firm in their vibration, they can get pulled down to the level of someone else's vibration. And the other thing I want you to know is that your belief systems about things can pull you down even though you were high on the emotional scale. Because we go up and down the emotional scale in a split second because it takes four seconds to think a thought. So here I am, really happy and I'm telling you a true story now. Here I am, really happy, had a great day. And there is it, that guy who is a friend of my boss. I hate this guy because he's, I, I just don't like the way he looks at me, makes me really uncomfortable. And he's going into the elevator just now and I need to be in that same elevator because I just got off work. Guess what? I'm not taking that elevator. Because he has brought me down the emotional scale. I don't want to be anywhere near him. But you see what I did? I was right here until I saw him. And when I saw him, my memory of what I think he is, do I know that he is a horrible person? No, I don't. But my impression of him is so strong that I don't even want to be in the same elevator with him. So our opinion of someone will bring us down the emotional scale. Or our opinion about someone will take us up the emotional scale. Right? I mean, I, I remember, I have never felt that way about anyone in my life, except my maternal grandmother. When she knocked on the door, it was like, I can't even describe- I can't even describe the joy that I felt, right? So it does, it didn't matter where I was on the emotional scale, the fact that my grandmother was at the door put me here. So when we respond to people and things from the lens of our beliefs that we've already got stored inside us. Our reaction is based on that belief system, has nothing to do with the other person. They could be innocent. Completely, of all the crimes that we have uh, already given them, put on their plate. Right? They could be innocent. But our opinion is what has us going up and down the emotional scale in a split second unless we do something. So, do I want to give up my place over here and go down to a place of fear? Just because I don't want to ride this elevator with this person? I don't want to be in fear because guess what? If I come here to a place of fear, you know what's going to happen? All these things in the world around me that are also on a place of fear are now suddenly making their way into my life. So I want to feel the fear and get out of that vibration as fast as possible. Ideally, I want to deal with my emotional response to this person so that I never have that emotional response to them ever again. Because I should never give up my place high on the emotional scale and come down the emotional scale just because of someone. And this is what Abraham means when they say find your stability, find your sea legs, be stable in your vibration. Nothing should shake you from here. That's what it means to be unconditional. Unconditional love is all about that. Stay here regardless of everyone around you. Because when you go down the emotional scale, you start attracting all sorts of things that you don't want. And if you stay in that vibration and you tell that story again to yourself, or you talk to someone else about it. Now you're staying there longer. And the longer you stay there, the more momentum you create. Now seventeen seconds is enough to get momentum started. Sixty-eight seconds, a manifestation is already on its way. Try staying there for two minutes. And then see what happens. You can run an experiment. I have already run an experiment. That's why I cheat, I teach the two-minute exercise. Alright.
Which one is that?
Uh, Mercedes, it's the two-minute exercise in the book Thrive. You already have it. You have the book Thrive, right? So you do the two-minute exercise and then you do the thought mapping, negative or positive. And then that's how you learn how to program your thoughts. Yeah. Okay. All based on Abraham's teachings, but the way I logicized Abraham's teachings. Okay. Um, law of attraction is the universal manager of all vibration which expands into everything that exists throughout the universe. Not just planet Earth, not just you and me and the neighbor. The entire universe vibration is managed by the law of attraction. Law of attraction is responding to the vibrational content of your physical thoughts. It is also responding to the vibrational content of your inner being. And this statement here is what I was explaining to you. When I explained to you the whole concept of getting off the subject. If you get off the subject, law of attraction will continue to respond to your inner being's vibration. And therefore manifestation will happen. Let your inner being manifest for you. You get off the subject. Make sense?
Alright, may I ask something?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there, is there, I mean, you said that our inner being is always high on the emotional, emotional scale. So is there anything that we can do to make the inner being either happier and faster, whatever, or it's always?
It's always there, it never. Your inner being never leaves its place really high on emotion, never comes down. That's why when you feel bad, your inner being is not agreeing with you, your inner being is staying here. Your inner being never leaves its place right on top of the emotional scale, always stays there, always pure. There's nothing you have to do. The only thing you have to do is to close the gap. When you feel bad, ask yourself the, this question. If I'm feeling bad, that means that my inner being is not thinking the way I'm thinking. So, how should I be thinking? What would my inner being be saying about this person?
And then watch for the answer.
Yes. Cause your inner being's answer will always come from a place of love. It will never come, it will never come from anger, revenge, fear, guilt, blame. When you think thoughts like that, they're coming from your intellectual mind, they're never coming from your inner being.
And how do we foster our relationship with our inner being? I mean, how do we become more open to, to the guidance?
By appreciating and asking for guidance, yes. When you ask for guidance, it's like any other desire. And then if you have no attachment to it, it will come.
Beautiful, thank you.
The, the guidance is always there. It's our ability to hear our guidance that we want to enhance. Right? Yeah. Okay. Um. So then we are on page twenty and in the italics there. The universal manager of all vibrations responds to the clarity of vibration offered by your newly expanded inner being. The result is a powerful swirling vortex of attraction. So. Those are actually complex words because what Abraham is saying there is that your inner being focuses on the thing that you have created, even if you are not focusing on it. And so your inner being has expanded, has become a future version of you that has the thing that you want to have. And so the reality, if you, you would have heard Abraham saying that the reality that we are living just now is past tense because our inner being has already moved forward from here. The reality that we are living just now is the past tense of what our inner being is living. Our inner being has already moved on to the next thing. Our physical body is experiencing the physicalness where our inner being has already moved on to the next thing. Alright, better words, better words, there are better words. I can see the confusion on your faces. Um, okay, I like this analogy. I use it quite a lot. Um, you know how if we put a pot of water on the stove and turn the stove on? Now, we understand that the steam that's rising from the pot is the water that's evaporating. But while the water is warming up, getting to a hundred degrees so that it starts uh, it starts that process of steaming up. There's already steam developing, all the way from water rising in temperature to get to the boiling po- uh, point. Steam is already being created. That steam is like the non-physical version of the water that's in the pot. It's the future version of the water that's in the pot. It's going, that water is going to turn into steam. So the steam is the future version of what's in the pot. So like we are in the pot, our inner being is the steam, it's already become that, it's already got that energy. Okay? So our inner being is living the future that we've created by giving birth to a desire. It's already on there. And our inner being manifests what we want right away because it has no resistance. See, the thing that keeps manifestation from happening is resistance. When you give birth to a desire, your inner being manifests it right away because your inner being has no resistance. And so there are things that we put in our vortex that we have wanted, that we want. That we may never be able to actually experience in our physical reality. But when we transition, we give up all resistance and then everything that's in the vortex becomes one with us. Abraham has explained this concept. I don't know if you've heard it, but that's what it means. So what's happened? You have changed your state and you have become non-physical. The things that were in the vortex, that your inner being had already manifested and was enjoying and living. You didn't manifest them into physical reality. But when you become non-physical, now you're in your own vortex and you have everything that's there because you have changed form. Only two things can happen. Things that are in the vortex can change form and become physical. Or we can become non-physical. Do you see that?
Can you say that again?
Okay, there are only two possibilities. The things that are in vibrational form become physical and we can touch, feel, lick them as Abraham would say. Or we change form, we croak and we become non-physical and now we can have them all. Because they're all in non-physical form. So only two things happen. Manifestation either happens this way or we go that way. Okay? But as Abraham has taught us, there is no reason why we can't manifest everything that is in our vortex. All we have to do is give up resistance. When you give up resistance, everything that is in non-physical can become physical. Um, it is, it does not take more energy to create a castle compared to a button. How many times have we heard Abraham say that, right? It's as easy. Every time you want something. The energetic vibrational form of it is created and held in the vortex. Guess who else is in the vortex? Your inner being. So the relationship that you created, the house that you created, the money, the health, whatever you created. You created it. It is in vibrational form in the vortex. And who else is in the vortex? Your inner being. So your inner being is enjoying all the things that you're creating. You're not enjoying it. You're here in physical form. So what you want is for these things to come out of the vortex into the physical reality and they can. And they can, if you get off the subject. If you get off the subject, then your inner being can complete the creation process. What is the creation process? It's it's like three D printing. Things that we create in vibrational form, they need more energy in order to manifest. They need to solidify. So the steam needs to become water again. And then you'll see it. Right? So, how does the steam become water again? How does this stuff that's in the vortex pop into physical reality? It pops into physical reality when it has enough energy given to it. It needs more energy, either yours or your inner beings. If you and your inner being are both giving it energy, which means you're aligned like that. Then manifestations happen really quickly. They pop out of the vortex, one by one by one really quickly. But when you're not giving it your energy, only your inner being is giving it energy, it takes longer. But it needs the same amount of energy, whether it's a castle or a button, same amount of energy is needed. Doesn't need more energy. So, when we get off the subject, things that are in the vortex can pop into our manifested world. But if, if we weren't able to manifest those things. Soon as we change form and we become non-physical, now we, we've now there's no separation between us and our inner being, so we manifest everything that's in our vortex. Does that help? Andrew, does that help clarify? Yeah, okay. Heather? Yeah? Alright. I know, complex. Complex, and this.
So our inner being, I mean, our, so our vortex has everything we want
Yes.
forever?
Yes.
I mean.
Well. Abraham says that we've put twenty or thirty lifetimes worth of stuff into the vortex.
Wow.
So we don't, there is so much stuff that we've put into non-physical reality, we have created it. We should be living it. We should get more of it out of the vortex into reality. That's what this book is all about. It's about how to think so that you can bring more of the stuff that's in the vortex into physical reality.
Wonderful.
Yeah? Yeah. Alright. So, um. Law of attraction, where am I? Okay, so now envision this swirling, swirling vortex. And the power of attraction that is amassed as the law of attraction responds to this pure, non-resistance focus desire. The vortex is literally drawing in all things necessary for the completion of every request it contains. All cooperative components are being summoned and are coming for the completion of these creations. For the answering of these questions, for the solutions to these problems. And the purpose of this book is not only to help you remember the process of creation and remember the pure positive energy platform from which you have come, but to help you remember the power of this vortex and to remind you of your emotional guidance system so that you can consciously and deliberately achieve the vibrational frequency of your vortex. Okay, so. Um. We have put so much into the vortex that there's a lot of energy in there. And that energy pulls everything into the vortex that is needed for manifesting it over a period of time. Everything is in there. Alright, so then Abraham talks about the purpose of this book is to help you remember who you really are. To help you remember the purpose of your physical experience, to restore your feeling of self-appreciation. For what you are accomplishing here in your physical body. To help you remember that you are first and foremost a vibrational being. To help you remember that there is a non-physical aspect of you that exists now. Also to help you to be aware of the relationship between the two vibrational aspects of you. To help point your awareness consistently towards the swirling vortex of creation. Which contains all that you desire and all that you have become. In short, this book is written to help you get into your vortex. Yes, exciting. So as our understanding improves, then our ability to draw things from the vortex into physical reality also improves. So Abraham is not saying take the vortex and bring it down to your level. Abraham is really saying you elevate yourself so that you can get into the vortex. And still stay in physical form. Okay? Um, everyone who turns up in your life, from the people you call friends or lovers to the people you call enemies or strangers. Come in response to your vibrational asking. You not only invite the person, but you also invite the personality traits of the person. This is what I have underlined. You not only invite the person, but you also invite the personality traits of the person. So our personality towards one person can be different from our personality towards another person. So, our personality towards one person can be different from our personality towards another person. Right? We all have that aunt who still treats us like we were six, right? Okay. Uh. Okay, so, yeah?
Does that kind of mean we invite the personality traits of that person to our own personality?
No, into our life, into our life, that, that person will show us the behavior that we are attracting from them. We attract the behavior. Um, I notice this a lot when I'm. Um, observing people that. If you were in a busy place like a, a checkout at a grocery store or at the airport. You will see that the customer service people who are in those positions. Their behavior changes based on who, who is in the lineup coming up. They are super nice to some people. And then they are so abrupt with other people and you're like, what is going on with you, like, you know? And it's because we draw from each other the aspects of personality. That we are attracting based on where we are on the emotional scale. Because law of attraction never sleeps, law of attraction is always working. So even in our personal relationships, you know, you can, you attract from each other. Behavior, but it's, it's easier to see it when you're observing other people who don't have anything to do with your life. It's easier to see it, to observe it. Because you are not emotionally involved in that situation, right? You're just an observer. And you observe that kind of a behavior. Um, imagine this, uh, someone in, in the unicorn club had this happen recently. Um. You can have, uh, a policeman give one person a ticket and let the other person go off the hook. Haven't you seen that happen? Same policeman, same stretch of road, same infraction, but. One person can go scot-free and another person can get a big penalty. Why? Because their vibrations were different. So it's our vibration that brings out the behavior of the other person. Okay? Um, and that's what this is saying. You know, i- in all Abraham books that I've read, this book, every sentence in this book has a story behind it. Every sentence, it's like, there's a lot in it, every sentence has a lot behind it. Okay, so Abraham is saying here, asking for something wanted. Or it's not about asking for something wanted, but offering a vibration that then the universe matches. So, um, they're talking about people, they argue that they would never have asked for something so unwanted to come into their experience. For they believe that asking for something means asking for something wanted, but. By asking, we mean offering a matching vibration. We know that many of the relationships or experiences you have attracted, you would not have deliberately attracted if you had been doing it on purpose. But much of your attraction is not done by deliberate intent, but, but rather by default. And that's the key, that's where pre-paving comes in, when you pre-pave, you are deliberately managing your vibration, right? Pre-paving is the tool that we use so that we can manage our vibration ahead of time. It is important to understand that you get what you think about whether you want it or not. And chronic thoughts about unwanted things invite or ask for matching experiences, the law of attraction makes it so. Right? Um. Alright, so I underline the words in this paragraph, the first paragraph on page twenty-two. Uh, simply put, if someone had not prodded you into more expansion, you could not feel the pain. Of not keeping up with that expansion. And basically in this paragraph, what they're talking about is that those people who. Who are part of your having an unpleasant experience. They prod you into expansion. So, how does expansion take place? Um. Two vibrational cords, m- my inner being and me, and then I deviate from my inner being. So now I have expanded to the extent of my emotional scale. And when I close the gap, now that expansion is complete. Okay? So that's what they're talking about, people who are part of us having an unpleasant experience, they result in our expansion. And now we must close the gap, because when this expansion takes place, our inner being goes there. And becomes one with it, but we haven't gone. So we have to close the gap. Okay? Go ahead.
Is contrast required for expansion?
Yes.
You can avoid that con- contrast?
No, it's not about avoiding contrast, it's about learning how to deal with it. Contrast creates expansion, but here's the thing that I learned from Abraham Heather. Is that contrast does not need to be something negative. Contrast just means. Observing something and wanting something better or different. So the way I see it is. Contrast can be painful. Or it can be as happy as going into a, a, a store to order a pizza and looking at all the toppings and saying. Hmm, do I want this topping or this topping? That's contrast. But it's happy contrast. If you go into a Lexus dealership and you ask yourself, should I buy it in white or black? That's happy contrast. Right? So contrast does not necessarily have to be negative. We don't want to get, uh, get away from contrast because I still want the deliciousness of choosing between a white. Or a black car. That is also contrast. Contrast does not have to be negative. That's a misconception that a lot of Abraham followers gather because of the way. Contrast is generally experienced by most of us. But for some people, contrast is between going to England for a holiday or going to the, you know, Bahamas for a holiday. Like, that's contrast. But it's happy contrast, that's the kind of contrast we want. And so that's what happens when we start living life from the top of the emotional scale. We start living a life full of contrast, but happy contrast. Okay? So we don't want to do away with contrast, because then life would be boring, all the cars in the dealership would be the same color. Right?
I am shocked.
So I don't want to eliminate contrast, but I want contrast from the top of the emotional scale.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good question.
And so the, and so you close the gap by soothing yourself, is that?
Yes, you sco- close the gap by soothing yourself, by becoming someone. Who looks at things the way source looks at them, the way your inner being would be looking at it. So, you know, and Abraham gives this example so many times is, when you look at someone and they anger you. You, anger is telling you that you're looking at that person in a manner that your inner being is not looking at them. So you say to yourself, well, I'm really angry at this person, but I guess my inner being loves them, that's why I'm feeling upset. I'm feeling upset because I'm not feeling in love with this person, whereas my inner being is in love with them. So what should I do? How can I bring myself around to looking at this person through the eyes of source? And that is where we do all our soothing self-talk, that's where we use the four-step process. To turn things around, to, to what are we turning around? We are turning our thinking around. Okay? Awesome, awesome. Alright guys, we are at the end of our time commitment, so I will stop here on page twenty-two. Our next heading is the powerful eternal universal law of attraction. I'm gonna stop here and just leave the floor open for any questions that you guys might have. And I'm just going to check here. And your inner being, what image comes to mind, Yolanda is asking? Um. Your inner being. You can give your inner being whatever visual you want, but that is basically what some people. Imagine or create a visualization of their inner being as their guardian angel or. Um, a lot of people will give it a persona, because it makes it more real for them, Yolanda. So, um, but in my case, I am visual but not visual to that extent. So to me, it's, i- it does not have a physical form, it's just like a swirling energy in my mind. So when I think about my inner being, to me, the representation is just swirling energy. Tamika is saying, I don't think I've heard it this way before, I love that my inner being will keep my desires active, absolutely. That's what Abraham has taught us, Tamika. I'm glad that I've offered it in a different way that you can see it differently. Yes, Tamika, get off the subject, our inner being absolutely has our back.